And here we go. A proclamation. Whereas Curtis Shuttle joined the San Marcos Fire Department on July 9th of 1990 as a firefighter trainee, promoted to the rank of engineer in September of 1994, and in 2020 was transferred to the Fire Administrative Office to work in fire support services. And whereas Kurt holds numerous fire certifications, including Advanced Structure Firefighter, Fire Instructor II, Hazardous Materials Technician, Intermediate Structure Firefighter, and is a Certified Emergency Medical Technician. And whereas he received the Phoenix Award in 20... I'm sorry, 2002, has been awarded with three Fire Department Unit Citation Awards: one in 2014 for an 18-wheeler rollover, 2015 for the Memorial Day Flood, and in 2017 for the April 11th Flood, and has received two Certificates of Merit. And whereas Kurt's ingenuity and mechanical aptitude have been huge assets to the department throughout his career, and during the past four years, he's been responsible for coordinating fire station maintenance, repairs, supplies, equipment, appliances, coordinating with internal city departments and external contractors, ensuring the maintenance and upkeep of the Fire Department facilities. And whereas after providing 34 years of dedicated service to the City of San Marcos and its residents, Curtis Shuttle will retire on July 1st of 2024, and will enjoy his time in his newly-built Lakeside East Texas cabin with family and friends, as well as his favorite pastimes of hunting and fishing. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim July 1st of 2024 as Curtis Shuttle Day in San Marcos, and do hereby call upon all citizens of San Marcos to honor Kurt Shuttle's long career serving the residents of our community with the San Marcos Fire Department, and wish him well in his retirement. You will be missed.
Thank you, Mayor. Kurt was here when I started, and serving 34 years in the Fire Department is an amazing feat. In almost half your life, you've been, maybe over half. He's been serving, and his role, I don't know, the last five, 10 years has been different, but his purpose has been the same: to serve the community, to make sure our folks out in the field have what they need to respond in a timely fashion. I consider him a friend. It's been amazing to work with him. It's been an honor, and I'm excited to see these guys get to retire and enjoy the next chapter in their lives. So, congrats.
Thank you.
Let the photo-taking begin.
Let's do one. Open up your proclamation. There we go. All right. And now, another proclamation, because we're still live. Proclamation. Whereas John Keenig joined the City of San Marcos Fire Department as a firefighter trainee on July 9th of 1990, and whereas John was promoted to engineer in March of 1995, promoted to lieutenant in February 2008, promoted to captain in December 2009, with his latest promotion to battalion chief in February 2014. And whereas John has been responsible for the design, specification, ordering, and upfitting of every frontline fire engine and truck currently in use, and he has been instrumental in the design and construction of Stations 2, 4, 6, and the new training facility. And whereas he has received the Phoenix Award in 2004, numerous Certificates of Merit and letters of commendations, was awarded Officer of the Year in 2016, he's received unit citations and exemplary service recognition for the station builds and the new training facility. And whereas John Keenig will retire on June 7th of 2024 after 34 years of service, and will certainly be missed by his fellow firefighters in the San Marcos community. John will enjoy spending time outdoors on the lake, at the coast, and camping with his wife Wendy, along with children Zachary, Preston, and Maya. Now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim June 7th of 2024 as John Keenig Day, and do hereby call upon all citizens of San Marcos to honor John for his long career and commitment to the residents of our community with the San Marcos Fire Department, and wish him well in his retirement. We're gonna miss you.
They left out pancake griddle.
Thank you, Mayor. John, congratulations. John's one of the hardest-working people I know. He's one of the most knowledgeable people I know. If something's broken, John knows how to fix it, regardless of... it doesn't matter. Maybe a computer, I've got a leg up on him. Other than that, spreadsheets may be better, too. His career's been amazing. He's been in support services for 12 years. And again, along with Kurt, he's the reason our folks have fire trucks that go down the street, and facilities that our folks reside in. And like a lot of people can be replaced, and we say it's hard to replace folks, but John's truly gonna be hard to replace. He's gonna be missed. It's been an amazing career. He's got an amazing family, amazing support structure. The good thing is, he'll be here still, and we'll be calling on him often. So, congratulations, my friend.
Let the photos begin.
You gotta open your proclamation, John. I was gonna tell you. All right, we got everybody. One, two, three. All right, we got everybody. Fix smiles. One, two, three. One, two, three. Last one, right? One, two, three. Cool. We got it. Thank you.
Come on in. A proclamation. Whereas the institution of slavery for African-American people in America began in 1619 with the landing of the first slaves on our shores, and continued some 246 years until President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st of 1863 to be effective January 1st, 1865. And whereas the proclamation declared all enslaved people in the Confederate States in rebellion against the Union shall be henceforward and forever free. And whereas the Civil War did not officially end until April 9th, 1865, when General Robert E. Lee surrendered to General Ulysses S. Grant at Appomattox, official notice came to Texas on June 19th, 1865. And whereas the 19th day of June, or Juneteenth, became a day of jubilation and liberation for Texas slaves, and today is the oldest-known celebration of the ending of slavery in our nation. Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and emphasizes education and achievement. It is a day, a week, and a month marked with celebrations, presentations, cook-offs, community discussions, and family gatherings. And whereas San Marcos supports and recognizes the importance of honoring and celebrating the rich heritage, resilience, and contributions of African-Americans in our country and in our city, we also seek to foster an understanding, respect, and celebrate our diverse cultural backgrounds. And whereas the Honorable Al Edwards, a member of the Texas House of Representatives from Houston, authored and introduced House Bill 1016 in 1978, and on June 13th of 1979, Governor William P. Clements signed a bill into law that made the Juneteenth Emancipation Day an official state holiday in Texas. And whereas Juneteenth did not mark the end of America's work to deliver on the promise of equality, it was a major milestone in recognizing the end of a dark chapter in American history, and optimistically marked a new beginning. Juneteenth not only commemorates the past, it still calls us to action today. And whereas Juneteenth holds significant historical and cultural importance, it also provides an opportunity to reflect upon our nation's journey toward freedom, equality, and justice for all. It continues to serve as a reminder of the work still needed to actualize the words of our Declaration of Independence, that all men are created equal and endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, among them life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas in June 2021, Juneteenth became the newest national holiday, one of the major points of Juneteenth is to remind us that all Americans were not free on July 4th of 1776. Juneteenth represents a struggle for freedom that is older than America itself, and reminds us that freedom should be celebrated whether July 4th or June 19th. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of San Marcos does hereby proclaim June of 2024 as the City of San Marcos' month-long celebration of Juneteenth, and do hereby call upon the people of San Marcos to join together throughout the month of June in honor of this significant day, and to recognize the importance of Juneteenth. Yes. Who's gonna speak?
Derek Bens wants to... I give everybody a little... I'm running out. This is our preacher, Derek Bens. He's not gonna give us a slowdown of all the activities that are gonna actually be actually happening within the City of San Marcos.
I need to know about the cake.
Oh, yeah. It's on there, Mayor.
It's on there. Thank you, Mayor, and David. There are four days that we want to bring to your attention regarding the Juneteenth celebration. It is a month-long celebration, but there are four days in particular we want to highlight. The first one will be next Friday. There'll be a fish fry over at the Mitchell Center. Come through, enjoy some good fish. There's pretty good cooks over there that take care of that piece of it. Then the following Friday, the actual Juneteenth cook-off kicks off. That's gonna be over at the Mitchell Center as well. That's on that Friday. That's the beginning. There's a... On that Saturday morning, the 15th, there's a unity walk. We'll get together at the crossroads and walk down to the Mitchell Center. The unity walk is a time for all of San Marcos to come out: red, yellow, black, and white, we don't care. If you enjoy freedom, we want you to be a part of it, to show really the rest of the country what unity looks like in the city. I still think this is the best place to call home in all of America. That's just my personal opinion. That's 8:30. We line up, 9 o'clock, we start to walk, and there's a day-long activities on that 15th. Some good cooks will be identified and recognized, but that's the Juneteenth order for that day. And then on June 19th, the actual holiday, there's some actual events over at Dunbar Center. So, I think that's 10 o'clock that morning.
10:19.
10:19 is the kickoff. Feel free to come through, enjoy a day of activities, come, have fun with us, fellowship with us. We'll say it this way: someone asked, "Is Juneteenth more than barbecue?" That was a question that was asked. I said this earlier. The question is absolutely yes, it is. But how better to celebrate than with good food, good music, some Domino's?
Jump Road?
A little of that. All that stuff. All that stuff. All that stuff. But bringing friends together in a way of community, celebrating each other's victories. We'd love to have you be a part of it.
Thank you all for continuing the celebration year to year.
I just wanna add, my name is Mitya Miller. I'm with Dunbar Heritage Association. Let me get my little notes here. And I'm the vice president. Just to kind of elaborate, also on the 15th, we will be having our children event at the San Marcos Public Library, all about education, about what... why do we celebrate Juneteenth children's style? So I know, I always think about that, that the children, they're off on a holiday, but they really don't know what the holiday is. So that's our point, is educating. Then back on to reiterate, on the 19th, we will be there, celebrate at Dunbar Community Center. We will have some of our finest leaders doing our Emancipation Proclamation that the General Gordon Grant actually read. We're gonna have our mayor, our assistant city... I'm sorry, our city manager, Stephanie. We're gonna have the chief of police there, reading part of it. We're gonna have the county judge, and then we'll have the president central there also. We're gonna be doing bingo. We're gonna be doing cakewalk. We're gonna be doing the reel. So if you have Facebook, you hear about all the games on reel. We're gonna be doing it real-time. We're gonna have what we call a panel discussion, and then we're just gonna have fun. And then, one of our first events that we're initiating this year is what we're gonna be doing, the celebration of the Black Kings. And basically, that's gonna be the event that we're gonna be honoring and recognizing incredible achievements of contribution of Black men in our community. And that's gonna be on June the 29th at the San Marcos Public Library. Thank God for the library. And also, that's gonna be from 3:30 to 5:30. So please join us, and by all means, have a happy Juneteenth.
I just wanna add a few things, because we've got our posters up here that have been posted out all over the City of San Marcos. As you can see around here in this circle, this is every year that we've done a T-shirt. So if you see the poster, all these T-shirts represent a year that was actually created by a member. Everyone you see up here is a member of Juneteenth. We collided with Dunbar Association, so you'll see us next year come back with even a larger Juneteenth. Along with that, we're hopefully, we're gonna have a parade also. The other thing is too, is I want everybody to know, you can see these pictures right here. My dad, very good cook. Kenny Burleson, Buttweiser, really helped us out back in the early, 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 early 90s. Paul Barnson, which is not with us now, with Buttweiser. Lori Brown, the owner. We had to put a picture in there of Paul, because we started out with five cooks, and we started out at the Mitchell Center. And there's a shirt in there. You might be able to see it right here. It's showing them, a guy with a drumstick in his hand. So, along with that, we got Floyd Hoffman. We also have Mr. Burleson, Robert Burleson, which one of his sons is not here, but we've got Ms. Burleson up there, and we've got Mrs. Brooks. This festival is for everyone. We're working the grounds. We love that the city has worked with us throughout the years, because we started right here in San Marcos. We're at the Mitchell Center. Hopefully, we'll be still there. We appreciate each and every one of y'all: Mayor, our city manager, Stephanie, and the Fire Department, the chief of police, and EMS, of everybody that's worked with us on this year's barbecue cook-off with our 30-year anniversary. Thank y'all so much.
A proclamation. Whereas the institution of slavery for African-American people in America began in 1619 with the landing of the first slaves on our shores, and continued some 246 years until President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st of 1863 to be effective January 1st, 1865. And whereas the proclamation declared all enslaved people in the Confederate States in rebellion against the Union shall be henceforward and forever free. And whereas the Civil War did not officially end until April 9th, 1865, when General Robert E. Lee surrendered to General Ulysses S. Grant at Appomattox, official notice came to Texas on June 19th, 1865. And whereas the 19th day of June, or Juneteenth, became a day of jubilation and liberation for Texas slaves, and today is the oldest-known celebration of the ending of slavery in our nation. Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and emphasizes education and achievement. It is a day, a week, and a month marked with celebrations, presentations, cook-offs, community discussions, and family gatherings. And whereas San Marcos supports and recognizes the importance of honoring and celebrating the rich heritage, resilience, and contributions of African-Americans in our country and in our city, we also seek to foster an understanding, respect, and celebrate our diverse cultural backgrounds. And whereas the Honorable Al Edwards, a member of the Texas House of Representatives from Houston, authored and introduced House Bill 1016 in 1978, and on June 13th of 1979, Governor William P. Clements signed a bill into law that made the Juneteenth Emancipation Day an official state holiday in Texas. And whereas Juneteenth did not mark the end of America's work to deliver on the promise of equality, it was a major milestone in recognizing the end of a dark chapter in American history, and optimistically marked a new beginning. Juneteenth not only commemorates the past, it still calls us to action today. And whereas Juneteenth holds significant historical and cultural importance, it also provides an opportunity to reflect upon our nation's journey toward freedom, equality, and justice for all. It continues to serve as a reminder of the work still needed to actualize the words of our Declaration of Independence, that all men are created equal and endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, among them life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas in June 2021, Juneteenth became the newest national holiday, one of the major points of Juneteenth is to remind us that all Americans were not free on July 4th of 1776. Juneteenth represents a struggle for freedom that is older than America itself, and reminds us that freedom should be celebrated whether July 4th or June 19th. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of San Marcos does hereby proclaim June of 2024 as the City of San Marcos' month-long celebration of Juneteenth, and do hereby call upon the people of San Marcos to join together throughout the month of June in honor of this significant day, and to recognize the importance of Juneteenth. Yes. Who's gonna speak?
Derek Bens wants to... I give everybody a little... I'm running out. This is our preacher, Derek Bens. He's not gonna give us a slowdown of all the activities that are gonna actually be actually happening within the City of San Marcos.
I need to know about the cake.
Oh, yeah. It's on there, Mayor.
It's on there. Thank you, Mayor, and David. There are four days that we want to bring to your attention regarding the Juneteenth celebration. It is a month-long celebration, but there are four days in particular we want to highlight. The first one will be next Friday. There'll be a fish fry over at the Mitchell Center. Come through, enjoy some good fish. There's some pretty good cooks over there that take care of that piece of it. Then the following Friday, the actual Juneteenth cook-off kicks off. That's gonna be over at the Mitchell Center as well. That's on that Friday. That's the beginning. There's a... On that Saturday morning, the 15th, there's a unity walk. We'll get together at the crossroads and walk down to the Mitchell Center. The unity walk is a time for all of San Marcos to come out: red, yellow, black, and white, we don't care. If you enjoy freedom, we want you to be a part of it, to show really the rest of the country what unity looks like in the city. I still think this is the best place to call home in all of America. That's just my personal opinion. That's 8:30. We line up, 9 o'clock, we start to walk, and there's a day-long activities on that 15th. Some good cooks will be identified and recognized, but that's the Juneteenth order for that day. And then on June 19th, the actual holiday, there's some actual events over at Dunbar Center. So, I think that's 10 o'clock that morning.
10:19.
10:19 is the kickoff. Feel free to come through, enjoy a day of activities, come, have fun with us, fellowship with us. We'll say it this way: someone asked, "Is Juneteenth more than barbecue?" That was a question that was asked. I said this earlier. The question is absolutely yes, it is. But how better to celebrate than with good food, good music, some Domino's?
Jump Road?
A little of that. All that stuff. All that stuff. All that stuff. But bringing friends together in a way of community, celebrating each other's victories. We'd love to have you be a part of it.
Thank you all for continuing the celebration year to year. Did you have something?
I just wanna add, my name is Mitya Miller. I'm with Dunbar Heritage Association. Let me get my little notes here. And I'm the vice president. Just to kind of elaborate, also on the 15th, we will be having our children event at the San Marcos Public Library, all about education, about what... why do we celebrate Juneteenth children's style? So I know, I always think about that, that the children, they're off on a holiday, but they really don't know what the holiday is. So that's our point, is educating. Then back on to reiterate, on the 19th, we will be there, celebrate at Dunbar Community Center. We will have some of our finest leaders doing our Emancipation Proclamation that the General Gordon Grant actually read. We're gonna have our mayor, our assistant city... I'm sorry, our city manager, Stephanie. We're gonna have the chief of police there, reading part of it. We're gonna have the county judge, and then we'll have the president central there also. We're gonna be doing bingo. We're gonna be doing cakewalk. We're gonna be doing the reel. So if you have Facebook, you hear about all the games on reel. We're gonna be doing it real-time. We're gonna have what we call a panel discussion, and then we're just gonna have fun. And then, one of our first events that we're initiating this year is what we're gonna be doing, the celebration of the Black Kings. And basically, that's gonna be the event that we're gonna be honoring and recognizing incredible achievements of contribution of Black men in our community. And that's gonna be on June the 29th at the San Marcos Public Library. Thank God for the library. And also, that's gonna be from 3:30 to 5:30. So please join us, and by all means, have a happy Juneteenth.
I just wanna add a few things, because we've got our posters up here that have been posted out all over the City of San Marcos. As you can see around here in this circle, this is every year that we've done a T-shirt. So if you see the poster, all these T-shirts represent a year that was actually created by a member. Everyone you see up here is a member of Juneteenth. We collided with Dunbar Association, so you'll see us next year come back with even a larger Juneteenth. Along with that, we're hopefully, we're gonna have a parade also. The other thing is too, is I want everybody to know, you can see these pictures right here. My dad, very good cook. Kenny Burleson, Buttweiser, really helped us out back in the early, 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 early 90s. Paul Barnson, which is not with us now, with Buttweiser. Lori Brown, the owner. We had to put a picture in there of Paul, because we started out with five cooks, and we started out at the Mitchell Center. And there's a shirt in there. You might be able to see it right here. It's showing them, a guy with a drumstick in his hand. So, along with that, we got Floyd Hoffman. We also have Mr. Burleson, Robert Burleson, which one of his sons is not here, but we've got Ms. Burleson up there, and we've got Mrs. Brooks. This festival is for everyone. We're working the grounds. We love that the city has worked with us throughout the years, because we started right here in San Marcos. We're at the Mitchell Center. Hopefully, we'll be still there. We appreciate each and every one of y'all: Mayor, our city manager, Stephanie, and the Fire Department, the chief of police, and EMS, of everybody that's worked with us on this year's barbecue cook-off with our 30-year anniversary. Thank y'all so much.
A proclamation. Whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, and whereas everyone should be able to live without fear of prejudice, discrimination, violence, and hatred based on race, religion, gender identity, or sexual orientation, and whereas the City of San Marcos, Texas appreciates the value and dignity of each person in our community, and whereas all are welcome in the City of San Marcos to live, work, play, and every family deserves a place to call home where they are safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas the City of San Marcos appreciates the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the LGBTQ community which strengthens our society, and whereas it is imperative that young people in our community feel valued, safe, and supported by their peers and community leaders regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression. And whereas the rainbow flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion, and support for social movements that advocate for LGBTQ people in society, and whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for our LGBTQ community, and is an opportunity to engage in dialogue, to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. And whereas June is celebrated as Pride Month nationwide, now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim June of 2024 as Pride Month, and do hereby call upon the people of San Marcos to support, understand, and speak for tolerance, justice, equality, dignity, and appreciation for all of our citizens, and to respect and honor our diverse community, and celebrate and build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance. Thank you. Thank you for being here today, and I think there's more information about Pride Month and celebrations that are later in the year. Well, who's gonna explain that? Sylvia?
Yes. I kept saying, somebody else speak for once. This month, we decided to do a seven-day takeover in San Marcos, and we were hoping that would get maybe seven people to let us take over the bars or facility, but we ended up with 17. So we're doing 17 days, back-to-back, three hours a day, just to celebrate pride this month. But we're still gonna move pride to September, when the students come back. We're still working on that project. As you can see, all the different organizations are here, and we're teaming up this year like there's no tomorrow. So, this is Heather, and I want Heather to speak, because she never speaks.
I'm representing BPSF, so for 14 years, we've been providing emergency stabilization funding to LGBTQ young adults, and our application is online, easy and accessible, and we will be bringing back academic scholarships for anybody who lives in San Marcos or Hayes County, who's gonna be attending any higher education or trade schools within Hayes County or San Marcos. So that, we'll be rolling that out in the fall, but we know that our population is very vulnerable to losing support financially and emotionally when they come out or get outed, and so BPSF has been helping fulfill a little bit of that need by having a community that stands up for them and supports them during a really vulnerable time.
And now, after pride, we have the River... Rainbow River of Colors?
Colors of the River. Oh, let's see. Colors of the River will be celebrated at Ivors River Pub. It'll be the fifth annual celebration. It's a little parade on the river. It's a lot of fun, and that will be on the Sunday, the 14th.
Thank you all very much. Photos there. A proclamation. Whereas the institution of slavery for African-American people in America began in 1619 with the landing of the first slaves on our shores, and continued some 246 years until President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st of 1863 to be effective January 1st, 1865. And whereas the proclamation declared all enslaved people in the Confederate States in rebellion against the Union shall be henceforward and forever free, and whereas the Civil War did not officially end until April 9th, 1865, when General Robert E. Lee surrendered to General Ulysses S. Grant at Appomattox, official notice came to Texas on June 19th, 1865. And whereas the 19th day of June, or Juneteenth, became a day of jubilation and liberation for Texas slaves, and today is the oldest-known celebration of the ending of slavery in our nation. Marcos, developers, and our many community partners, will retire on June twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-four, leaving behind a legacy of projects that have left a positive impact in our city. And whereas some of her many accomplishments have been the implementation of the city's drainage utility, which was one of the first in the state, and is now called the Stormwater Utility, was the initial organizer of GIS, the Hotel Conference Center, the Habitat Conservation Plan, worked with TechDOT on three railroad overpasses, responded to several flood events, had multiple successful grant awards to meet community needs, reducing the financial impact to the city, and has begun the preliminary work on the new City Hall project. And whereas Lori was recognized in twenty-twenty-one from Hayes County Women in Leadership as a leader of integrity, she has served with distinction as our expert with the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, a member of the Regional Arterial Studies Steering Committee, and the Alliance Regional Water Authority, as well as part of the Washington, D.C. Federal delegation. And whereas Lori will retire on June fourteenth of twenty-twenty-four to enjoy traveling, volunteering, taking classes. I'm saying this because it's in here, moving more and sitting less. Spending time with her husband, John, sons Daniel Ryan and Colton, and daughter-in-law Katie, with the first grandbaby expected in August, and her parents Kent and Arlene Anderson. Now therefore, Jane Hewson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim June fourteenth as Lori, Lori Morier Day, and do hereby call upon all citizens of San Marcos to show their appreciation to Lori Morier for her service and dedication to the residents of our community. I'll tell you what, I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that there is any employee who has had more impact, positive impact on San Marcos and who we are today. And Lori, thank you. Thank you for being my friend. Appreciate it.
She's going to have the proclamation in front of her. Okay, anyone else?
There's really not a lot that I can say about Lori that you don't already know, other than she's a phenomenal person. Outside of the individual and all of her contributions, Lori is, she always tells you exactly the honest truth on anything, even if it's not popular. She is competent, she is compassionate, she is caring, she loves with her whole heart, and just does everything that she possibly can to make San Marcos the best that it can possibly be. We're honored and privileged that we had an opportunity to work with you, Lori. You've always been an amazing person, and I just cannot wait for you to go and enjoy the other parts of your life, but we're going to miss you a lot, and just know that your contributions are going to live on forever. Thank you.
A proclamation. Whereas Pam Thomas, a native of San Marcos, will be honored on her forty years as an educator. Her gifts as a teacher, assistant principal, and principal have been experienced by thousands in our community. And whereas Pam Thomas is known to be kind, generous, patient, empathetic, dedicated, and one of the hardest-working individuals out there. Her warmth was felt by all her teachers as she took a personal interest in their lives and families, even hand-delivered teacher appreciation gifts to their homes during remote working times. And whereas Pam Thomas began her career as a special education teacher in San Marcos CISD and served in that role for many years. For the last twenty years of her career, she has been the vice principal or principal of Bowie Elementary School. Throughout her career, she strived to create a positive and nurturing learning environment. Her belief is that whether we are five or fifty, we are all learners and leaders. And whereas Pam Thomas is committed to preparing students for the future by providing innovative and creative approaches to learning and has educated generations of San Marcos students. And whereas Pam Thomas was so impressive to work with that she instilled a sense of loyalty from the people that worked for her and with her. And whereas it is hard to put into words the impact Pam Thomas has had on the San Marcos community and the students of Bowie Elementary, anyone who is blessed enough to have worked with Pam is one of the lucky ones. And whereas the city of San Marcos wishes to recognize Pam Thomas for her deep love of education, her consistent generosity to the community, and her active role in developing young minds, now therefore I, Jane Hewson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the fourth day of June of twenty-twenty-four as Pam Thomas Day, and do hereby call upon all citizens to express our appreciation and recognize the outstanding achievements of Bowie Elementary Principal Pam Thomas.
Well, and I'm way over fifty, so. I'm still learning, right? This is amazing. Uh, it's so wonderful to have my family here, but not this family, but this family. Born and raised in San Marcos, I never left, and I'm not going to leave now. So I appreciate this community, it has been great to me. We're all Rattlers, my kids all graduated from the system, and I believe in this system. And I just appreciate the, the support from this community all these years. It's, it's wonderful. I appreciate everything.
Thank you. Being an elementary teacher is not easy. My mother was a sixth-grade teacher, and um, and assistant principal and principal, that's phenomenal, and thank you for serving our students.
Thank y'all for being here.
Proclamation. Whereas Make Music San Marcos is an annual one-day festival on the first day of summer that celebrates the ability of everyone to make music, presented locally by Visit San Marcos. And whereas Make Music San Marcos is a day of music-making in public spaces all throughout San Marcos, all completely free, few musicians, and audiences alike. And whereas Make Music San Marcos will launch on June twenty-first of twenty-twenty-four, inspired by France's National Musical Holiday.
How do you pronounce that?
I don't know.
Fête de la Musique. That began in nineteen eighty-two and is now an international phenomenon that takes place on the summer solstice in more than one thousand cities and one hundred and twenty countries. And whereas Make Music San Marcos joins a national group of make-music cities that include New York, Chicago, Houston, Miami, and Philadelphia, and involves many musicians, bands, and ensembles from a diverse array of styles and genres. And where on June twenty-first of twenty-twenty-four, Make Music San Marcos will celebrate its first annual event as people of all ages, musical genres, and ability levels, from students and amateurs to professionals and marquee artists, gather throughout the day in San Marcos to engage in music-making. Now therefore I, Jane Hewson, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim June twenty-first of twenty-twenty-four as Make Music San Marcos Day, and do hereby call upon and encourage all citizens of San Marcos to celebrate the joy of making music.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we are thrilled to bring Make Music Day to San Marcos for the first time to um show the music that is here culturally and just all sorts of different things. Um, we have different host locations that are set up and different musical artists that are set up uh with them, so any member of the public is able to go and make music, whether you're a beginner or an expert. Um, so if you go to makemusicday.org/stanmarcos, you can find all of the um host locations that are up right now. Um, if you are looking to host location, whether you have a business, you have your house, you have your front porch, you have your neighbor's home, there's so many opportunities to make um a place for music, and we're encouraging everybody to step out and be involved in this event.
Well, seeing as how it's international, I think it's only fitting that we bring this to San Marcos, so thank you for doing so. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much.